Good evening and welcome. Today is Wednesday, June 10, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to start tonight's meeting as we do on our regular meetings with comments from board members. So Laura, did you want to start?
I'll start. Thank you, Michelle. Hi, everybody. Everyone joining us from home. I see lots of participants. I'll keep my comment brief. I hope you can hear me because my computer does have a fan. So I apologize if it seems to be running. But first, I just want to just briefly thank Ms. Goodman and the administrators and teachers for all of the year-end celebrations that have been going on. I had my eighth grade step-up ceremony on Monday, and it was fabulous. It was really just very well done as far as making a celebration for the kids and recognizing them. And I know fifth grade was today. I know Teraz probably going to mention that because your daughter participated in that. But I did watch it, and I thought it was very, very well done. I also want to thank Mr. Marash, Mr. Kay, and really all the teachers that have guidance. I've been going around house to house. They're giving out Dare Awards. I saw them at a neighbor's house for essays, you know, things that the kids would normally come and read them. So it's really in this time where we're tested to celebrate and tested to recognize in different ways. It's really, I think, I admire, and I think that the staff and under Ms. Goodman's direction has done just a fabulous, wonderful job. And I want to thank everyone for all of the hard work that they've been putting into this. And also, I just want to also say good luck to the high school seniors. I know this has been a really tough year, and I certainly know that they have missed so much. And I want to just recognize that and say that, you know, I know there's been work in the background. I know there have been committees, and we've been getting updates. And I'm sure next week they'll have a wonderful celebration. Obviously, not what they would want, but in this time, the best case scenario that we could come up with as a district. So I want to wish them all the best. I know that they've shown tremendous courage and resilience, and they really have rose to the occasion in such a tough time. So congratulations, best of luck. And I will end my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you. Cynthia?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to say a lot of the same. I mean, I think that Ms. Goodman and the administrative staff, teachers, and everyone who has helped support in these celebrations have done a fabulous job. I know that I attended the middle school and the high school award ceremonies, which I really thought were really great. Sometimes I'm there, and I don't really get to hear everything because there might be some chatter behind me. So it was really nice to be able to really focus on what the teachers were saying and the comments that were being made, and then really see the students. So I really enjoyed it. And then even trying to figure out, oh, my God, who's getting that award? You know, it was very exciting. And then also the middle school graduation. I didn't, I honestly, it was much more than I had expected. And I was actually very excited about it. So they did a really good job of making it really the best that it possibly could be. And I really think that the students enjoyed it as well. So I want to thank everybody for really, I guess, in this situation, just really doing the best that they can. And I did see the fifth grade out there, too. I mean, I just think you guys are doing just an amazing job for the difficult times that we're in. And the kids, I'm sure, appreciate it, and I know that the parents do. So thank you for all the hard work in such tough times. And good luck to those seniors. I'm looking forward to just watching from my house and seeing what's going on with that. But I know that, again, again, like Laura had said, it might not be exactly what they had wanted and hoped for. But I know in the situation, they are going to make it the best it possibly could be. So good luck to all, and just enjoy it.
Thank you, Cynthia. Teraz?
Okay, so I have, today I was part of fifth grade graduation. I think that when I think about all of these experiences for these kids and what our school district has done with it, it's truly when life is handing you lemons, you're making lemonade. Today far exceeded my expectations, the expectations of many who I spoke to. I know that beyond a lot of work has gone into different variations of what graduations and stepping-up ceremonies would look like. And I could say that from a personal standpoint, my daughter definitely felt honored and appreciated and recognized for her hard work and for her accomplishments thus far. And I can't say enough about how well-done today was. It goes to show what really a lot of planning and teamwork can produce. And it's something we should be incredibly proud of. I also want to give a shout-out to the middle school because we were a part of the National Junior Honor Society induction with Ms. Richter and Mrs. Nicoletto. I hope I didn't butcher your name. And it was great. We were doing the best we can. The kids are being recognized. They know they're being recognized. And at the end of the day, I think what we're all here for are the kids, and for them to be recognized, feel good about their accomplishments, and know that they deserve them. And I think that Tuckahoe is by far doing an exceptional job. They're killing it in all areas. And I'm sure that the high school graduation will exceed people's expectations, even those who are maybe doubting what could be. And I also think that we all have to remember, this is a moment in time, and it's something that is going to ultimately build character in our children. And it's only the beginning of what's to come. So I'm super proud to be part of this board, part of this district, a parent. And I want to recognize, of course, Mr. Marash, who's on this call, and Mr. Kilgallen because I have served as the Coddle Gaze on this year, though the tail end of the year, I was not really there, obviously. But they have done an amazing job under really, really tough circumstances. So thank you for all you've done, and today was amazing. Congratulations, Mr. Marash.
Thank you, Teraz. I actually started my day this morning. I saw Mr. Marash at Coddle. He was out there, 7:00 this morning, with the custodial staff and Mr. Kay and teachers getting ready for the day. And I think it's just testament of the amount of work that has gone in to really do justice by our students and really make the best of this challenging time that we're in. But I really do think it has given us the opportunity to highlight our students in a personal way that, as Cynthia said earlier, you know, we can't do when we have a whole big audience in front of us. So I just think that there were things that came out as a positive, and I think the efforts is what really needs to be thanked. And I did want Ms. Goodman and Mr. Marash, and Dr. Linehan, and Mr. DeBellas, and Mr. Kay all to know that the board has received emails thanking you for your efforts, and the teachers in everything that has happened since March 16. And really, it's really been a compliment to the district, and I thank you all because we know it's a challenge, and these are times that no one could have predicted. And I think we have really gone above and beyond. And I think that the parents who reached out to the board to recognize those efforts, and on behalf of them and on the board, I do want to thank you all, especially the teachers who, on a day-to-day, were in their homes struggling with their challenges within their own personal lives and had to serve our students and did it well. So I thank you. I did want to say that Pete is going to be joining us a little bit later. And if he, when he comes in, wants to make some comments, we will allow him the time to do that. I'm going to turn it over now to Ms. Goodman.
Good evening, board members, colleagues, and community. I just want to, I'm going to echo what you all have been saying. I have been attending many year-end celebrations. And having attended the eighth grade graduation on Monday and today, the kindergarten and fifth grade graduation, this was a testament to what Tuckahoe is all about. First and foremost, I really have to thank the administration who worked really for endless hours. I mean, they really were falling asleep at their computers. And I also want to thank them personally, too. Greg Steefel, Scott DeBellas, and today, John Marash and Pete Kilgallen. Who, by the way, John, you can definitely have a second career as an MC, as could Pat O'Connell, who did the middle school. It really is a second calling. And Pete, you are the best tiger I have ever seen. So you knocked it out of the park, truly. And what you did is you gave closure to those students for a year that is like no other. And kids, you know, it was a stressful year for everybody. But what I saw today and on Monday were just smiling faces. Kids were beaming. This was such an individualized graduation like I ever saw before. And they were so proud, and they felt so a part of something bigger than themselves. And I saw the families also feeling it was bigger than themselves because it was our family, the Tuckahoe School community. And you really felt that at those graduations. And I just really have to say that the administration and their teams gave students something that, and I've watched others, other graduations, that no other district did, with the warmth, the compassion, and the effort that was put into these graduations and everything leading up to them. All of you might know just your child, but in every single school, there were so many awards ceremonies. There were people dropping off magnets or dropping off different things for kids. And even when kids had to return their Chromebook, it was a celebration. We did everything with really, I think, a lot of finesse and a lot of care. And finally, we are coming up to high school graduation. And I know I will thank Dr. Linehan next week and Scott DeBellas, but I have to give a special thank you to Dr. Linehan because I really feel like he is on my speed dial. And we have spent so much time on this. And we are trying so hard to give parents and students a very personalized graduation with all the pomp and circumstances that they would have if graduation was with all of them together. And I think when everybody sees it, they will see the effort and the care and how much love there is for our students, our high school seniors. And we are looking towards, you know, if things continue in this realm and we keep on doing better and that we flatten the curve, you know, we're hoping to do something in July. We're hoping to do some kind of a celebration. And who knows, maybe we'll be able to have a prom event. So we have our fingers crossed for that. But I want everybody to focus on next week and our upcoming graduation. Also, tonight, we have tenure recommendations and retirement recognitions. You see, a lot of people are on the call. We let our tenure, our up-for-tenure teachers and our retirees invite whoever they wanted. So they are here to celebrate with them. And I just like to say something about teachers in general. I am a teacher. I always think of myself as a teacher. And I am in awe of the teachers in Tuckahoe. When I say that they care about the students, they really do. And when they say that teachers make a difference in a child's life, the teachers that are retiring today and the teachers that we are giving tenure are the ones who have affected so many children. So to the retirees, I just want to thank you for all, for giving your all to the students of Tuckahoe. And for those teachers who are getting tenure, I know every single one of you, and I know you pretty well. I have to say that we have made a great choice in giving you the gift of tenure. And I'm so glad you're going to be with us for a long, long time and make a difference in so many kids' lives. Thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Lee, do you have any comments?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Comments by the PTA?
I have those for us. The PTA would like to thank all of the volunteers who have helped us bring to fruition the many events and activities the PTA was able to do this year. While things did not go as anyone planned, we were able to reimagine and reallocate efforts and funds toward some new and different initiatives, including supporting graduation activities. Thank you to everyone who supported those efforts, including our virtual 5K, which took place last week. The PTA Virtual Book Fair is open and will remain in place where all students and families may purchase books through September 4. We will have one more virtual fundraiser coming up in June and hope you will all be able to support the PTA. Like all nonprofits, the PTA has been deeply affected by the pandemic with the inability to run many of our big fundraisers this year, including Spring Social. So please know that whatever you can do to support us now, help us fund the over 75 activities we have planned for next year. Information about all of this can be found at www.tuckahopta.com. At the time of this writing, we do not know who our Board of Education trustees will be. So for now, we thank all of the returning board members and the candidates for your service and willingness to serve our community. We also thank Michelle Lissio for her many years of service to the school community. The PTA appreciates all that you have done for our students and teachers and wish the very best in your future endeavors. We also need to thank Lauren Truel for her years of commitment to the Tuckahoe School District as district clerk and assistant superintendent, Ellen McDonald. Somehow that didn't come out here. And it's later in her report. Ms. Truel has been a great support and resource for the PTA for many years, and we wish her the best. To Mr. Steefel, thank you for your dedication to Tuckahoe middle school students and for your partnership with the PTA during your years here. And to Dr. Ellen McDonald, thank you for your years of service as well. You two, in every role you have served, have been, have always supported and been willing to collaborate with the PTA, as well as been an open door for us as we have needed you. We wish both Mr. Steefel and Dr. McDonald great future success. We also have three retiring teachers this year, and the PTA has made donations on their behalf. To recognize Ms. Maureen Coleman, a donation has been made so that a poetry tree may be planted in the outdoor garden at Coddle this fall. To honor Mr. Bart Dappolito, who retired earlier this year, a donation has been made to purchase outdoor equipment for use at Coddle School during our outdoor recess. And to recognize Ms. Karen Pollack, a donation has been made to the Special Education Department at the high school so that a blender may be purchased for our Life Skills Kitchen. We thank each of these dedicated educators for their many years of service and for the measurable positive impact they have made on so many Tuckahoe students. To all the students moving up this year, the PTA is so proud of each and every one of you. We especially congratulate all the 2020 Tuckahoe High School graduates on your accomplishments. You have made us so proud during your years at Tuckahoe. We cannot wait to see how you go forth and create positive impact in the world. Finally, this is my last report to the Board of Education as president of the Tuckahoe PTA as my term is ending. I want to thank each member of my executive board for their tireless commitment to advance the efforts of the PTA to serve the children of Tuckahoe. I am privileged to have been able to work with such amazing volunteers. Stay well, everyone. Tara Zager, Tuckahoe PTA President.
Thank you. Thank you, Tara, for the kind words. I actually did think this was going to be my last meeting, but thanks to Governor Cuomo, we will have another meeting next week. Did we want to talk about that a little bit, Amy, about the changes in the election and when we're going to be meeting again and when we're going to be announcing the results? Because I don't believe we've announced that yet.
I'm going to turn it to Lauren as the board clerk to give us an update.
Lauren?
Sure. So the extension is for ballots received by mail. We can count any ballots that are received by mail only at this point through the 16th. So everything we have that was received, you know, through the Dropbox yesterday at 5:00 PM and then whatever we get on top of that via mail. So counting will begin at 5:00 PM on the 16th. It'll be live streams like we had originally planned. And then the results will be announced once everything is counted and tallied and all of that good stuff. I would anticipate, hopefully, you know, late, late on the 16th, and then the board would certify the results the following day at a special meeting.
Okay, so we haven't decided the times for that yet. So when we do that, we'll put out an announcement for that, for when we'll be doing that. What time?
For a special meeting? I would anticipate a special meeting on the 17th at 5:00 PM, assuming that we don't get inundated with another 4,000 ballots between now and then.
And then I just want to, sorry, Teraz. I know, I just wanted to clarify that the ballot, what has been received today, nothing will be counted. Nothing has been counted and will not be counted until the 16th at 5:00 PM, correct?
Right.
Okay. So I just want to make sure because we did have some questions on that. Okay. Teraz, I'm sorry, did you?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, just so everybody is aware. Ms. Truel, you're still going to be live streaming the vote count, correct?
Yep.
Right.
Through the live stream, click link on our website. There's it in the announcement on our website. It's specified there.
Right, so that part hasn't changed, so if anyone wants to watch.
Okay, Pete, I see Pete has joined us. Pete, did you have any comments that you wanted to make before we move on?
No, no. I apologize to be late, but I don't have any comments. Okay, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go on then to reading of submitted questions. Do we have any questions, Ms. Goodman?
Yes, I do have a comment from Susan Neely. I think she, this is also for the last meeting, but I'll read it. Dear Michelle, as you step down from the Board of Ed, I want to thank you for all the public, years of public service you've given to the Tuckahoe community. I've especially appreciated your fiscal conservatism and your measured responses to the community input. You've been a fixture on the board for as long as my kids, now teens, have been in the district. And for all these years, you've been representing me. Even when your position on a subject differed from mine, I have to concede to your careful contemplation of issues as you look beyond my singular interest. You've occupied a board seat through the development of two strategic plans, an exhaustive process with the capital improvement project, the consolidation of busing, and numerous other initiatives. While your stance on some subjects have drawn some opposition, I know that anyone in your shoes would as well, if not from one constituent, then from another. While I do value fresh blood in an organization, your departure will leave behind a big hole with respect to knowledge of district history. As we approach this year's candidates debate, I'm reminded of how your past performance in these events reflected your institutional awareness. Your intimate knowledge of all Tuckahoe matters that have been on the table for the last decade can't be replaced.
Thank you, Susan. That was very much unexpected and very much appreciated. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, let's move on to number six. Thank you to the retirees.
Yes. Would you like the principals to speak about each one? Because I would have John speak first. He has two retirees, Maureen Coleman and Bart Dappolito. John Marash, are you there?
Mr. Marash?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
You can.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I guess I'll start by just saying a few words about Ms. Maureen Coleman retiring this year. Maureen Coleman has been a teacher for 31 years. And I shared two years by her side, and it was a real pleasure. People become teachers to make a difference to the students that are in their class, to teach them that they can accomplish their goals and become whoever they want to be in this world. And that's exactly what Maureen has done. Maureen has shown all of us that you can make a difference in a student's life by the day-to-day things that you do for them, those small things that work together to make a big difference in a child's life. She always, she was always available to help her students succeed. Whenever former students returned to Coddle for a visit, they all would always stop by Maureen Coleman's room. And that speaks volumes about Ms. Coleman. Besides being an amazing teacher, Maureen is also a great and supportive colleague. She has long been the go-to person to any faculty member or administrator who needed someone to help brainstorm teaching ideas or other suggestions. And after 31 years of teaching, you have a world of knowledge and experience to share. So thank you, Maureen, for an exemplary career and for many kindnesses shown to all of us. We're sad about your departure, but happy to know that you will enjoy a well-deserved retirement. I know you'll come back to see us a few times to say hello and see how well your Coddle Cubs are doing and how they're learning. And we wish you much happiness for the future. Congratulations, Maureen.
Thank you. John, you wanted to talk about Mr. Dappolito?
Want to move on to Bart? Sure. And I have to quickly apologize for my voice. That's from the events today. So I might not be able to hear me too well. For that, I apologize. So Mr. Bart Dappolito has been a teacher for 27 and 1/2 years in Tuckahoe. And Bart and his wife, Monica Dappolito, have also been a dynamic teaching duo at William E. Coddle School for many years. Bart was our beloved PE teacher at Coddle. He always brought levity to our faculty meetings and to his classes as well. Sometimes the hardest part about teaching is just getting the students involved and interested in learning. But that was never a problem for Bart. Whenever I would pass his PE classes during a lesson, I would know the students were going to be engaged and involved, and Bart would be encouraging them to always do their best and try something new. Bart always knew how to keep the students interested because they were learning, but also having fun the whole time. He always showed a lot of patience with every student. And even the most reluctant child or student enjoyed Mr. Dappolito's PE class because that's just who he was. Bart's disposition, his creativity, his energy made him an exceptional teacher, a respected and valued colleague, and a friend to all. He made a lasting impression on students and on all of us who had the pleasure of working with Mr. Dappolito. Bart, you will certainly be missed, but now you'll have plenty of time to whip up batches of your famous hot sauce, homemade hot sauce. And Bart, I do hope to see you on the golf course soon enough. We wish you many years, many happy years in your retirement. Congratulations, Bart.
Okay, we have, thank you so much, John. And good luck to Maureen and Bart. And thank you so much for the years of service to our students. And now we'll ask Dr. Bart Linehan to speak about special education teacher Karen Pollack.
Sure. I'd like to thank Karen Pollack and congratulate her on a wonderful career. Karen, your empathy, caring, has made such a difference in the lives of so many students, first at Coddle and the last decade at the high school. So you've always worked to go beyond the norm, trying to assure your students progressed and learned well beyond their means. Karen has worked so well with her colleagues, always trying to facilitate the learning experience, raising the bar, not only for her students, but for all students. Working one-on-one, you can see Karen's persistence and determination to make the life of students better and improve their educational knowledge. Karen, we wish you well in your next endeavor. Have a great life, and the best to you and your family in your retirement.
Thank you. Okay, those are our retirees. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add from the board, congratulations on the retirements. And I think it's just warranted to say that I know that it wasn't the ending of their career that they were hoping for or anticipating. Every teacher loves to be in the classroom with their students, and I'm sure that is the way that they wish that they could have ended their career. But we thank you and know that we appreciate all that you've done, especially in these last few months. So thank you and congratulations, and enjoy your retirement. Okay, we are going to move on now to the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Just give me one second. I'm sorry. Okay, motion to approve consent agenda items 2 through 8. Is there a motion? Pete, second, Teraz. Discussion, all in favor? I got everybody. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Move on to business of the board. This is the second reading of policies. We will not be voting tonight on this. It's just a second reading of revised policies, 5500, 55R, and 8635. Any discussion? Okay, that will be voted on at the next meeting. Number two, accepted donation. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district from the Toccoho P. T. A., and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved to accept a donation of $125 in honor of Ms. Maureen Coleman's retirement from Cottle to be used towards the planting of a poetry tree in the outdoor garden at Cottle in the fall. A donation of $100 in honor of Mr. Bart D'Appolito, who retired earlier this year, to be used towards the purchase of outdoor equipment for outdoor recess at Cottle, and a donation of $100 in honor of Ms. Karen Pollak to the Special Education Department to use for the purchase of a blender for the Life Skills Kitchen at the high school. Motion? Therese, second. Pete, discussion. Thank you to the P. T. A. All in favor? Number three, accepted donation. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to East Chester Women's Club Scholarship, and whereas the district would like to accept such donation, it is hereby resolved to accept a donation from the East Chester Women's Club in the amount of $1,000. Motion? Laura, second, Therese. Discussion. Thank you to East Chester Women's Club. All in favor? Number four, approved professional services. Resolve to approve E. Two-E Exchange LLC Professional Services for $500 for the 2019-20 school year. I'm sorry, is there a motion? Pete, second, Laura. Discussion. All in favor? Number five. Tax anticipation note resolution of the Toccoho Union Free School District adopted June 10, 2020, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $4 million tax anticipation notes in anticipation of the receipt of taxes to be levied for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Lauren, do I have to read that resolution?
I'm afraid so.
Resolved by the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District in the County of Westchester, New York as follows. Section one, tax anticipation notes of Toccoho Union Free School District in the County of Westchester, New York, in the principal amount of not to exceed $4 million in any notes renewal thereof, and hereby authorized to be issued pursuant to the provisions of section 24.00 and 39.00 of the local finance law constituting chapters 33A of the consolidated laws of the State of New York. Two, the following additional matters are hereby determined and declared. A, the note shall be issued in anticipation of the collection of real estate taxes to be levied for school purposes of the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021, and the proceeds of the note shall be used only for the purposes for which said taxes are levied. B, the notes shall mature within the period of one year from the date of their issuance. C, the notes are not issued in renewal of other notes. D, the total amount of such taxes remain uncollected at the date of adoption of this resolution. Section three, the notes hereby authorized shall contain the recital of validity prescribed by section 52 of the law and shall be general obligations of the district, and the faith and credit of the district are hereby pledged to the punctual payment of principal of credit, oh, I'm sorry, punctual of payment of principal and interest on the notes, and unless the notes are otherwise paid or payment provided for an amount sufficient for such payment shall be inserted in the budget of the district, and a tax sufficient to provide for the payment thereof shall be levied and collected. Section four, subject to the provisions of this resolution and the law, and pursuant to sections 50, 56, 60, 61 of the law, the power to sell and issue the notes authorized pursuant heretofore of any renewals thereof, and to determine the terms, form, and contents, including the manner of execution of such notes, and to execute tax certifications relative thereto is hereby delegated to the President of the Board of Education, the Chief Fiscal Officer of the District. Section five, the note shall be executed in the name of the District by the manual signature of the President of the Board of Education, the Vice President of the Board of Education, the District Treasurer, the District Clerk, or such other officer of the District, as shall be designated by the Chief Fiscal Officer of the District, and shall have the corporate seal of the District impressed upon or imprinted thereon, which corporate seal may be attested by the manual signature of the District Clerk. Section C, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, discussion. Lee, do you want to talk about that?
Sure, so, as you know, the district's fiscal year starts on July 1 of every year. However, we don't receive our first installment of taxes from the community until October. So, what this resolution provides is authority for the school district to borrow against the eventual receipt of those taxes in order to maintain our cash requirements from July through October. This is just an authorization to borrow. We will only go out and get the tax anticipation notes if we do determine that there is a cash flow reason to do so, and our capital markets providers require us to show a cash flow projection in order to even go out and borrow for this amount of money. And we use this in the shortest term possible. If we do go out for the borrowing, interest rates are extremely low right now, so that it's very cost-effective to do this borrowing should we need to do so. But again, we will take a look at our finances and our cash flow this summer, and we'll make a determination at that time as to whether or not we will use any or all of this authorization through October.
I just want to say, for the nine years I've been on the board, nine years, I don't understand that the school year starts on July 1, but we don't get funded until October. So, every year this comes up, we do this every year, every year I have the same questions because no business would be able to run like that. It's just kind of silly, but, okay. Who am I to say? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Number six, approved an agreement. Whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District has been informed of a donation to be made to the district. Oh, that's, no, we did that already, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys. I'm a little out of sorts, okay. Number six, approved an agreement. Now, therefore, it resolved that Board of Education, Toccoho Union Free School District hereby approves and authorizes an agreement with Royal Coach Lines dated June 3, 2020, to A, reduce the sums payable to Royal Coach Lines Inc. during the period that the school district schools have been and will be closed to students by order of the Governor of New York State as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and B, extend its transportation contract with Royal Coach Lines Inc. for one additional year for the 2021 school year at a rate increase equal to the Consumer Price Index applicable to the extension of student transportation contracts, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the Board President to execute the agreement dated June 3, 2020 with Royal Coach Lines Inc., and authorizes the interim superintendent and assistant superintendent of business to take all necessary or appropriate actions in order to further the purpose of this resolution and comply with the terms of the agreement. Is there a motion? Peter, second. Therese, discussion. Okay, this is similar to the agreement that we had last month with Academy Bus for the period of time that the students have not been transported to the school due to the closure and therefore needing to make this agreement. All in favor? Number seven, approved an independent contractor services agreement. Resolve to approve an independent contractor services agreement with Lori Bauer for the 2020-21 school year at a rate of $1,000 a day, not to exceed 144 days for special education administrative services. Is there a motion? Therese, second. Peter, discussion. Ms. Goodman, did you want to comment on Ms. Bauer's return for next year?
So, as you, as you know, I was the director, and then I became the superintendent. She became the interim director for part of this year. We did, in all earnest, have a, a search for a director of special education, and we had a great committee, and we were, we, we did have a finalist who, who actually didn't, could not come to the job because of COVID-19. She did not think it was a good time to make a move, and we are finding that with all our, all superintendents are finding that with administrators right now. Nobody really knows what the future holds, and she ended up doing something that was very good for her with her school district that she was at. The, we have not, we looked, it's very hard to find a good seasoned special education administrator, which is what we need right now. I want to say that Ms. Bauer is, is an excellent, I think the principals would agree, collaborator and administrator. She really understands the needs of special education students, and she understands the law. It's, it's a job that is very, you really, it, it takes a lot of compassion and empathy, but also a lot of understanding of what the requirements are, and she has all of those, all of those pieces, and I believe that there is no better administrator we could have in that district right now, especially since I have a lot of experience in the field. I feel very confident. She's only going to work three days a week, sometimes four, so I'm ready and able to be involved in special education in the district until we eventually find a, a full-time person. But we've worked very well together this year, and she's worked very well together with, with the principals and with the teachers, so I highly recommend her.
I, I did want to just make one comment, if you don't mind, because this does come up sometimes in the community, and there have been comments in the past, that when we do hire interims or we hire on a daily rate, and it's, you know, thrown around there $1,000 a day or $1,100 a day, and there's this sort of insinuation that we're spending more than what we would normally spend. And in this scenario, Ms. Bauer's contract would be, would not exceed $144,000, and if our past director had still been with us with salary and benefits, the cost to the district would be $196,000. So, I just wanted to make that point because I just wanted the community to understand that we are not overpaying, and not only that, we have someone who has such experience, and we are actually very lucky to have. Ms. Bauer is also in a very high demand, and we were lucky to be able to retain her for next year. As Ms. Goodman just said, there are many positions where interims are being sought after for next year, and we are very fortunate to have someone with her background in our district to serve our students. I also want to say that I couldn't be happier to have a superintendent with the special education background of Ms. Goodman to oversee our special education department. We have never had our students with needs in better hands than they are now, so I, I want to just really make sure our community understands that, that not only do we have Ms. Bauer, but we have Ms. Goodman, whose expertise is going to really be such an asset to the students of our district who have those needs, so I'm very happy about that. All in favor? Okay, we're going to move now on to the personnel agenda, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six appointments to confer tenure tonight, which is very exciting for us. So, we'll start with number one. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the superintendent of schools confer tenure upon Cynthia Gorsi in the elementary tenure area effective September 1, 2020. Is there a motion? Therese, second. Cynthia, discussion.
I would, I would like John Marash to tell you about Cynthia Gorsi, please.
Sure, absolutely. Listen, Cynthia Gorsi is a remarkable educator. Cynthia has a tremendous background in E.L.A., and she has worked with our Cottle teachers in the role of the, as writing revolution liaison in the time that she's been here. This year, she has been a key member of the fifth grade teaching team that introduced the departmental model successfully into grade five at Cottle. Cynthia also comes to the table with great ideas, practical and practical suggestions that she is always willing to share with her colleagues. Cynthia has contagious positive energy, and she is always ready for every challenge. She always brings enthusiasm and positive reinforcement to her students, and that truly energizes her class. She also stepped up to supervise when Cottle launched its G.O. last year for the first year, and she continues to be the moderator of our G.O. here at Cottle. It is safe to say that faculty and students alike all find it a true honor and pleasure to work with Ms. Gorsi. Congratulations, Cynthia, on your tenure.
Thank you, Mr. Marash. All in fit, let's, all in favor? Okay. Congratulations to Ms. Gorsi. Can I just make a general comment about the tenure appointments? Since serving on the board, the process for tenure has really gotten very tight and very strict, and only candidates that really pass the bar with our principals and our assistant principals and are reviewed yearly and presented before the Board of Education in those reviews are then recommended by the superintendent to move forward for this appointment. So, it really is not something that is given lightly or easily, and is also something that this board takes very seriously, and we are proud of the process that, that has been established for tenure, and that Ms. Goodman has said that she has worked this year with each one of these candidates personally and recommends them is a very strong recommendation for me and for this board, and we're happy to move forward on it. Next, number two. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the superintendent of schools confer tenure upon Elise Koski in special education tenure area effective September 1, 2020. Is there a motion? Therese, second. Laura, discussion.
Mr. Marash, would you like to tell us about?
Sure, absolutely, it would be a pleasure. Elise Koski is an exemplary educator who is certified in both elementary and special education. Much of her student's success in her class relies on structure that is put in place by Elise and on Elise's ability to manage routines daily. Fortunately, Elise does a fantastic job building routines, adapting curriculum, training support staff, and managing individualized education plans. In addition, Elise does a phenomenal job as the lead teacher, guiding and collaborating with teaching assistants and aides in her classroom. She will do whatever it takes to meet the needs of her students. Elise also has a remarkable rapport and ability to communicate with the parents of her students. She generously shares very helpful ideas and detailed practical experiences with all of her colleagues, and she routinely participates in all professional development sessions. I have said it before, and I will happily say it again, Elise Koski is a model educator, and we are very fortunate to have her on our team. Congratulations on your tenure, Elise.
All in favor? Congratulations, Ms. Koski. Okay, number three. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the superintendent of schools confer tenure upon Jill Quaterero in special education tenure area effective September 1, 2020. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Therese, discussion.
That, do I jump in now?
You.
All right. Jill Quaterero has certification, again, in both elementary and special education, and she is truly an all-star reading specialist and special education teacher, and she brings to Cottle a wealth of knowledge about the P.A.F. reading program. Jill has a wonderful rapport with her students, and she is always willing to go the extra mile to provide whatever support is needed to reach students at all levels of ability. She has a remarkable ability to utilize positive reinforcement to draw out best effort and build confidence in all of her students. Jill is also a key member of Cottle's instructional support team. Jill's work ethic is beyond compare, and because she is always genuine and sincere and truly focused on the task at hand, she collaborates generously with everyone and gets great results. She is an outstanding educator. She is an outstanding teacher, and Toccoho is very fortunate to have her. Congratulations, Jill, on your tenure.
All in favor? Congratulations, Ms. Quaterero. Number four. Resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools confer tenure upon Jaclyn Tripodi in the speech and language tenure area effective November 20, 2020. Mr., oh, sorry.
I almost did that too, Amy.
I just, okay, I'm sorry, is there a motion? Pete, second, Cynthia, discussion.
All right. Jaclyn Tripodi is one of our rock star speech and language therapists at Cottle. She always puts 110% on, 100% of her talent, 110% of her talent, into making sure her students make progress and do their best to achieve their goals. She has a unique talent for incorporating student interests into her classes and enlivening their interest in learning. Her rapport with both students and their parents is exceptional. I have often received extremely positive feedback from families complimenting Jackie's professionalism, her skills, and her delightful personality, and I could not agree more. Jackie is also a true team player who always contributes significantly during team meetings. With other two faculty members, she developed the concept of an inclusion discussion with our faculty about how we can share with the general education students ways that we can view and understand and accept the physical, emotional, and academic differences that we all have, which in turn led to a highly successful discussion on an extended day with all grade levels. Ms. Tripodi is genuinely a standout teacher, colleague, and communicator. Congratulations, Jackie, on your tenure.
All in favor? Congratulations, Ms. Tripodi. Number six, resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools confer tenure upon Andrew Colasuno in the physical education and health tenure areas effective September 1, 2020. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. Dr. Linehan?
I'm here, I'm muting. Yes, it's a pleasure to talk about Andrew during his recommendation. His presence of having an excellent health teacher during these times is most critical. Andrew has elevated the health program tremendously, both in the middle school and the high school. His instructional skill to reach middle school and high school students is remarkable, given the complexity of the curriculum and a range of ages. Mr. Colasuno basically, as, attacks the most complex topic and makes it the most relevant and understandable for all his students. He does what fine teachers do, raising curiosity so that students want to learn more while making learning an enjoyable experience. Mr. Colasuno has also been a leader in the school culture, doing a remarkable job with the senior internship and coaching at various positions. I'm glad Mr. Colasuno is up for recommendation tonight.
All in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Colasuno. I also wanted to say about the, the work that's been done on the internship program for the seniors, it's been extraordinary. I think that, that's a program that actually, students, I'm sorry, seniors in lead positions, leadership roles of the high school came before the school board and presented to us in a very intelligent, respectful manner, asking to bring back this program, the internship program, and it was first piloted, and Mr. Colasuno, he took it on from the beginning and just really did such an extraordinary job with it, and working so hard to find matches for our students that gave them real life experience in the workforce, and I really think that amongst all the other things that he has done, that that program and the way that it started and where it is today, I just think is fantastic, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. All right, we are going to now move on to number seven. Congratulations again to all of the teachers tonight.
I think you missed one.
I did?
Five.
Oh, I did. Oh, that's terrible. That is terrible, I am sorry. Okay, so we'll make this one extra special. Number five, resolve that the Board of Education on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools confer tenure upon Sheila Mosa in the social studies tenure area effective September 1, 2020. Is there a motion? Laura, second, Peter, discussion.
The assistant principal is here tonight, the principal was not able to be here, so Scott DeBellas will give some background on Sheila.
Hi, everyone, good evening. Michelle, I know you did that intentionally, saving the best for last, as they say, although all of them are fantastic. I'm delighted to have the opportunity to speak about why Mrs. Sheila Mosa is an excellent candidate for tenure. Mrs. Mosa has been a seventh grade social studies teacher at Toccoho Middle School for the past four years, and came to Toccoho by the way of the New York City Department of Education, where she served as a master teacher and gained extensive experience in the area of professional development. Mrs. Mosa is an extremely talented and dedicated teaching professional who possesses outstanding content knowledge in the area of social studies, and someone who has an exceptional emotional intelligence. Mrs. Mosa has always displayed a passion for nurturing each and every one of our students while challenging them both academically and cognitively. Each and every day, Mrs. Mosa uses a wide variety of instructional strategies, and she's a master of weaving technology into her lessons to ensure that the students are always engaged. Mrs. Mosa is also a collaborative colleague to her peers, and she's assisted with the district's vertical alignment of curriculum in social studies across all three schools. I've had the opportunity to observe Mrs. Mosa many times over the last four years, and I believe she is an exceptional teacher and a person of extremely high moral character. It's my pleasure, and I think we are very fortunate to have her as a member of our faculty here at Toccoho.
All in favor? Congratulations, Ms. Mosa. Okay, we are now going to move on to personnel. Number seven, accept personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through I as outlined below. Is there a motion? Pete, second, Cynthia, discussion. All in favor? Great, thank you. Okay. And we are now going to, we are not going to adjourn, correct? Because we are going to move into executive session to discuss a personnel matter this evening, so we will go into executive session, and then we'll come back to adjourn, is that correct, Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, stay well and safe, thank you all.